Started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, August 7th, 2023. Mayor Robinson is unable to join us this evening, so I will be the presiding officer. So with that, we will go to a roll call. City Clerk, ready for the roll call?
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers all.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, was liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. All right, with that, we have a proclamation this evening, International Overdose Awareness and National Fentanyl Prevention Proclamation. And we'll have a few folks to say a few words and accept the proclamation, but I have Councilmember Barksdale ready to read that one. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global event held annually on August 31st to remember those gone too soon from overdose deaths, and whereas no community in Washington State is immune to drug overdose deaths, in King County, the number of overdose deaths has grown exponentially, increasing by 20% between 2019 and 2020, and an additional 39% between 2020 and 2021. And whereas the recent surge in overdose deaths is driven by fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid drug 100 times more potent than morphine, 50 times more potent than heroin, and involved in 70% of all confirmed overdose deaths occurring in 2022 compared with 10% prior to 2018. And whereas often consumed unknowingly by users, fentanyl is being used to lace or make fake prescription pills, and is also found in dangerous street drugs such as heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamine. And whereas more than 1,000 people in King County died of overdoses in 2022, and more than 700 died so far this year, including three in Bellevue on July 21st, nearly four people die of fentanyl overdoses a day in King County. And whereas National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day is established in memory of loved ones who lost their lives to fentanyl poisoning and to help prevent more deaths from the drug through awareness of its dangers, and whereas addiction is a complex and treatable disease, and a life of recovery is possible. First responders in Bellevue now carry Narcan, an overdose-reversing medication that has saved lives. And whereas the city of Bellevue supports local, county, and state efforts related to education, prevention, treatment, and recovery support for substance abuse. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2023, as National Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day, and August 31st, 2023, as International Overdose Awareness Day. In Bellevue, encouraging residents to support education and awareness.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. And I believe we have Captain Burrow and Captain Ottman here to accept the proclamation. And would you like to say a few words, gentlemen, before we take a picture with the proclamation? Thank you for coming down tonight.
Well, first, thank you for inviting us and allowing us to be here for this proclamation. As you know, fentanyl is a very, it's a tragic substance on the streets, and we are not, we in Bellevue experience it quite often. And I'd argue most of our cardiac arrest calls wind up being related to fentanyl overdose. And with the help and assistance with our PD partners having access to naloxone or Narcan, we're able to see reversals of the impacts of Narcan overdoses. And so with that, thank you for the proclamation.
How pervasive it is in our community now, you know, across the, you know, different spectrums in terms of incomes, or jobs, or racial, or whatever. It's across the city, and we're reminded when we hear about teenagers in our high schools, sir, this is nothing to be laughing about, you know, almost losing their lives to fentanyl. So thank you so much for the work that you do in our community. Thank you for your service, and thank you for coming down tonight to speak to this really important issue. And with that, we'll step down here and take a quick picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, and we'll move along to oral communications. City Clerk, any speaker signed up for oral communications this evening?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. There's pre-registered this evening to speak. And before I start calling names, I need to remind everyone that oral communications is for a period to last no more than 30 minutes, and only three people can speak to one side of any particular topic. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. And then in addition, I need to remind everyone that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure Laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, that no election-related topics can be discussed during oral communications or other public participation points on tonight's agenda. That includes promoting or opposing a ballot measure, or supporting or opposing a candidate, including one's own campaign. Anyone who begins talking about topics of this nature will be asked to stop. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Craig Speel. Also, Mr. Speel has provided a PowerPoint presentation that we'll put up, which means we won't be able to use the timer. Mr. Speel, I'll track your three minutes on my phone.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel. I am a resident of Bellevue, and I'm speaking tonight to request city council to consider...
They're not in front of us.
We got that.
Thank you, sorry.
Yep.
Do you see it now?
Not yet.
Just a title slide right now.
I thought it was just mine.
Still no... Okay, I think we've lost connection to the DAS monitors. Mr. Speel, I'd ask you if you want to begin, and we will get a copy of your PowerPoint presentation to the council.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel. I'm a resident of Bellevue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the community, and requesting city council embrace what's called a holistic view of neighborhood safety, being coined as Be Safe. This effort reflects input from over 20...
Sorry, Mr. Speel, can you hang on one second? Mr. Zimmerman, please stop chattering in the, we're trying to hear some oral communications this evening, so if you could please be quiet. This is your, technically, your second warning this evening. Thank you. Please go ahead, and we do have the monitor on now, Mr. Speel, so we can see your presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. I think, this effort reflects input from 20 community organizations and meetings with representatives at the police department, OEM, and neighborhood services. Next slide, please. Be Safe is an umbrella initiative with the goal to help make our neighborhoods safe and feel safe, and to promote emergency readiness, and to enhance a sense of community. Be Safe has the potential to build bridges with the city and community, and ultimately help neighborhoods become a force multiplier for the fire and police departments. Next slide. As a past president of the Lockhaven Community Association, currently a block watch captain and member of CERT, I understand firsthand the challenges of keeping neighborhood programs vibrant and engaging. Issues include leadership turnover, cultural dynamics, neighborhood churn, and the lack of city resources needed to effectively nurture and sustain such programs. Next slide. Bellevue's not alone. Nationally, the Neighborhood Watch program has become challenged to maintain. In an effort to make it more relevant, the national charter was expanded over a decade ago to include disaster preparedness and emergency response. Locally, Mercer Island and Redmond have embraced this role. Other cities have expanded their scope and initiated rebranding efforts to be more inclusive and welcoming, such as San Francisco and others. Spokane has created a 501(c)(3) organization to make it more agile and responsive to community needs. Residents have cited multiple safety concerns. These range from, next slide, the street and pedestrian safety, elder abuse, first aid training, to porch pirates and emergency readiness, to address environmental threats including earthquake, power outages, heat domes, and unhealthy air issues. Next slide. I believe Bellevue needs to take a broader view of the issues. While individual city departments are doing a great job, the community perspectives, efforts are siloed and fragmented. Next slide. Be Safe needs to build on the foundation of crime prevention. The police department and chief surely have made great progress in making additional investments as we speak. That said, the police department cannot address these issues alone. It is a shared responsibility with all departments. We believe the city needs to take a broader view of the perspectives. We need a toolkit, including a calendar of initiatives and engagement opportunities to support specific neighborhood needs. We need programs tailored not only for homeowners, but for residents of condos and apartments. Newsletters are not the answer. Neighborhoods need an advocate or enablsman to both proactively engage them and represent the needs back to the city. I look forward to working with the city to help Bellevue neighborhoods be safe. Good night and be safe.
The next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
And Mr. Speel, if you haven't done so already, can you please distribute that PowerPoint to all council members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My lovely Nazi Democrat mafia and bandita, yeah, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak, yeah. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I live in this city for 25-plus years. I want to speak right now a problem, but as I see here, to me, Bellevue looks right now like a Chicago in Torrey. People shoot one another in the street, and they, this what has happened under Democrat mafia control. This is number one. Number two, what is very important, and I spoke with you about this for many hundred times, you're only one city in King County who has this policy torrid minute for 10 people. You can't, last year from my understanding, right speak end of the meeting. To me, you look like a pure fascist, you know what this mean? You're not only fascist, you're very dangerous, because you're dangerous and Nazi or communist, because you're acting more dangerous in America under Constitution Law Open Public Meeting Act. In another point, what is, I'm totally surprised, you know what this mean? You support Russian-Iranian Muslim Union, who very dangerous for America, very dangerous for Israel. I'm a Jew, you know what this mean? I don't want what is Iranian Muslim under Russian support. Yeah, and right now, they come very close on to another. It will be atomic bombs this year or next year. It will destroy Israel first, you know what this mean? Eight million Jew, oh, you want what is eight million Jew will be killed? For this, you support Iranian Muslim and Russian Union? Yeah, in excess, we'll be New York. We're very lucky, 9/11, so this is not atomic bomb, but right now, we'll be, yeah. Because what has happened right now under Democrat mafia Bellevue city, we have too much problem, too much problem. We need to cleanse this chamber totally. When we not cleanse this chamber totally, it don't bring Bellevue like I see before Torrey, year 20, ever 20 years ago, you know what this mean? We, nothing will be changed. And 50% of people in Bellevue, 80% of people in Bellevue have a trouble, a problem. Life go hard or expensive, because everything what you doing is a nightmare. You want bring Amazon with 30,000 people from jungle, you know what this mean? It's make life miserable for all Bellevue city, for all 120, 50,000 without exception. And I speak right now to these people in Bellevue, what is I have a happy cow? What is you vote for Democrat? What is your reason? To me, you look like a mazahist. You like a pain? You wear and pay for pain? What does it give to you? Stand up Bellevue, we need bring Bellevue back again to normal. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Kelly Jiang.
Thank you, city council, for your time. My name's Kelly Jiang, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Issaquah Alps Trails Club in favor of the Save Coal Creek effort. So I am the chair of advocacy for the Issaquah Alps Trails Club, which has been working with the Save Coal Creek Initiative, which Sally, who's also here tonight, has been leading for the last few years. And we first want to thank the city staff for, you know, applying for the Conservation Futures Grant, which recently got approved by the King County Council for 9.25 million to support this acquisition of a critical link for the city of Bellevue's park system. We also want to thank the city of Bellevue, the council, and the mayor for their leadership in making, you know, the Bellevue a city in a park, and especially, you know, with the Issaquah Alps kind of being, and you can see on my shirt, it says the wilderness within, which is, you know, kind of the wilderness, but it's within the urban area, and this Coal Creek parcel is, you know, a critical linkage, which has been identified, even going back to like the King County's first comprehensive plan is a critical, you know, wildlife corridor. So this is a super exciting opportunity for Bellevue to be able to acquire this and make it part of, you know, the crown jewel of our park system. And so we would urge the city council to also, you know, allocate the 25% match for the county's conservation futures money. The voters are clearly in favor of this, as, you know, the Parks Levy for Bellevue passed last year, voters voted overwhelmingly in favor of increasing property taxes to pay for the conservation futures last November as well. And so we would encourage you on behalf of, you know, all the residents of Bellevue, King County, as well as all the animals who call the, you know, Coal Creek Natural Air and Cougar Mountain Home to purchase this parcel and, oh, was there an echo? And complete this acquisition to, yeah, to expand the parks and, you know, complete Bellevue's vision of being a city in the park. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sally Lawrence.
Hello, city council and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse. I'm Sally Lawrence, Chair of the Steering Committee for Save Coal Creek. We've been advocating for several years that the city find a way to purchase the Milt Swanson property on Lakemont Boulevard in South Bellevue. And so we are today, we are stunned and almost speechless, I won't be speechless, with King County's news a week ago, that they are ready to award a conservation futures grant to the city for $9.2 million for properties that would include the Milt Swanson property. So thanks again to Michael Shiosaki, head of the Parks Department, and to staff Cameron Parker, obviously wrote a very persuasive grant application. So thanks to them, and thanks to county leaders Claudia Balducci and Reagan Dunn for their promotion of this and support for this. $9.2 million, that's about three times the largest grant of conservation futures money over the last two years. Acquiring these properties will reinforce our image as a city in the park, a city that's not only growing sky-high in downtown Bellevue, but also understands the priceless nature of open space and trails. In his book, Lee Springgate, who was director of the Parks Department for many years, explains how downtown park came to be. It didn't just happen overnight. It took courage and vision on the part of city leaders and the park leaders. And it came about in the 1970s, park planning kind of changed. So they had a great concept for this central urban park, but at the same time, park planners were also aware of the growing environmental movement, and so that resulted in parts of our city, including the Lake Hills Green Belt, because of the recognition of the importance of connecting trails, parkways throughout the city, green spaces. Back then, back in the 70s, many people thought putting together the Lake Hills Green Belt would be too costly and too ambitious, but now we're very thankful that that was done. So Save Coal Creek's vision for the property is to enhance a largely open space park, preserving tree canopy, wildlife corridor, improve trail access, and save some of our coal mining history. We envision a visitor center where school kids can gather and actually touch pieces of mining equipment that were used back in 1910. We envision a gathering space where hikers can pause and refresh. So please, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, make this a priority during this fall as this opportunity presents itself. It's clear the citizens want parks and trails. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, unfortunately, before we call the next speaker, I would ask if we could take a three or four-minute recess. We're having some audio issues on the backend, so our Zoom participants can't hear at the moment.
Okay, very well. Let's actually take a five-minute break, just to give us your time. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. A few additional audio issues still. Clerk, would you like to give us an update?
Yeah, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. Unfortunately, we have had a piece of equipment in the backend completely fail on us here, so we are unable to get the Zoom participants where they can hear the meeting. There were two people signed up virtually to speak, who I will reach out to personally and have them submit their comments in writing to the council. In addition, I will reach out to the rest of those participating via Zoom and ask them to switch over to the YouTube stream so that they can watch and listen to the rest of the meeting. And that is the best that we can do at the moment.
Okay, thank you so much. Are you able to, the participants who are watching, are you able to reach out to them too, or in the chat?
Yes. There may be one person on here that I don't have an email for, but I will do my best to reach out to everyone.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
So I will go to our next in-person speaker, who is Brianna Cho. Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Brianna Cho, and I'm here today on behalf of a nonprofit called Businesses Ending Slavery and Trafficking, which we just abbreviate down to BEST. So we're a local nonprofit, and we're based in Seattle, just across the water, and we do human trafficking prevention work. I'm here today because the city of Bellevue awarded us with a grant, and we're using the money to implement an awareness-raising campaign called the Not Alone Campaign. And I'd like to invite all the audience members here to please join us in this campaign if you're interested. So I'm here just to share a little bit about what this campaign is about. So the Not Alone Campaign is an awareness-raising campaign that was created by survivors of human trafficking. And it's unique because it's the very first of its kind to have messaging that's speaking directly to survivors of human trafficking, or people who may be potential victims of trafficking. So I have two copies of the poster here today. I'm just gonna take a second to hold them up, and I'm gonna show the audience members.
All right. I'm gonna interrupt you for a quick second, Mr. Zimmerman. It's the third time you've interrupted this meeting, so I'm gonna ask you to please leave the chambers, and if not, I can have an officer remove you. You know exactly what you're doing, and you're interrupting again. So please leave on your own accord, or I'll ask the officer to remove you.
What is this possible?
Thank you very much.
I laughing, because this is...
Officer, could you please walk him out? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Why is you doing this? I only laughing, so I cannot laughing? This is not legal in America, or legal in your chamber? I only laughing, nice and easy and quiet.
As soon as he leaves, we'll proceed.
You see what he doing? I'm laughing, I sit here, I don't doing nothing wrong. I laughing, because she speak very good. She talk about trafficking. I support her absolutely, so I laughing.
Yep.
Are you arrest me?
No, officer, please escort him out of the chambers. Thank you.
No, I don't need outside. Next time, you will be arrest me. I need stopping this Nazi pig. Why you don't like me? Because I'm Jew? Because I'm against Democrat mafia? Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
I'm laughing, so they take me out. Nice, quiet laughing. They are real Nazi pig.
All right, sorry for that interruption. Please continue about the important work that you do.
It's all right. So just at the top of our poster, it has messaging like, "You're not alone." And we're reaching out to victims and letting them know that they're not alone, and that there is a community of survivors there for them, and there's a network of resources that's available to them if they can reach out for help and if they're ready for help. So what we're doing is that we're just hanging up these posters in the restrooms of businesses, city facilities, and really any public place where victims may come across them. So we're thinking grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations, even nail salons and hair salons. So we've been doing this outreach work. I'm just here at city council today to speak to the audience members, in case there are any business owners out there, or people that are part of organizations that are interested in joining us in this campaign. Please feel free to reach out to me, audience members. My email is brianna@bestalliance.org. I didn't prepare a slide, but my name is spelled B as in boy, R.I.A.N.N.A@bestalliance.org. And before I hand the floor off to another speaker, I just wanted to take a second to thank the city of Bellevue and its city council as well. As a local, small nonprofit, we don't always get support in this help to prevent human trafficking, so we deeply appreciate your support and your dedication to committing the resources of the city of Bellevue behind this work and foreseeing the value behind our campaign. Thank you so much for your service to our community, and thank you so much to everyone else for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Johnny Liu.
Hey, Deputy Mayor and city council members, I appreciate the time to speak today. My name's Johnny Liu. I'm a resident of Newport Hills, and I'm speaking in support, as with everybody else apparently, in support of Save Coal Creek and the work that they're doing there. I grew up in Lakemont, which is just a couple minutes away from the preserve, and so this is really near and dear to my heart. And I wanted to bring your attention to actually something that council passed last year, which was the 2022 Parks and Open Spaces System Plan. And a couple of the values in there, I think, are really like a hand and glove fit with the values of Save Coal Creek. The first value that the plan kind of covers is the preservation and the revival of critical stream corridors and the associated watersheds. And it specifically calls out Coal Creek as one of the four major ones, and it calls these critical corridors as the foundational backbone of Bellevue's natural system. So, you know, there's a huge priority on preservation of these natural spaces and stream corridors. The second one is the, there is a relative lack of green space in South Bellevue, and this is getting better. You know, Woodlawn Park is an example of additional green space that's come through, but it's still a little bit lacking, and I think, again, just preserving the space here as, you know, a natural preserve would be a huge benefit for South Bellevue. And the third one I want to cover is the, is actually preservation of our history. You know, as a kid, I'd go there, I'd see all the old mine trails. I specifically remember, I think it was Mine Shaft Trail that I'd go down, and you'd see a lot of the historical artifacts there. And the plan even highlights as an example, that you can go and have a guided tour of the area, and they'll kind of highlight the historical significance of a lot of the objects in the trails. So, you know, it's a perfect example of preserving Bellevue's history as we kind of move forward into this next chapter. I'm a bit of a numbers guy, so I'm also gonna leave some numbers here just to kind of reinforce the fact. The funding from council members Claudia Balducci and Reagan Dunn, it relies on 25% match from Bellevue. That's roughly $2.3 million. The current Parks Levy actually has rollover funds from the previous Parks Levy, about $1.8 million. So, you know, 2.3 needed, 1.8 rolled over. And the previous Parks Levy, a lot of it was already used to purchase areas like Coal Creek for preservation purposes. And so in many ways, it's kind of the perfect extension of that previous Parks Levy, to be able to use these funds for the, for the Save Coal Creek efforts. I'll kind of leave on a quote, which is, we all know the saying, "If there's a will, there's a way." In many ways, there is a way here, so I'm hoping that we can find the will to, you know, preserve our critical stream corridors, preserve the South Bellevue natural green spaces, and to preserve a lot of elements of Bellevue's history. So thank you for listening. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is William Chang.
$3.2 million and 6,500 students, adults, and industry professionals visiting the city of Bellevue. This is the impact of Bellevue's two largest annual events across three conference venues and eight hotels, including Maidenbauer Center. Dear Bellevue City Council members, my name is William Chang, and I'm a rising senior at Bellevue High School. My family and I have been a resident of Bellevue for about five years now. I'm also humbled to serve as a Washington DECA state president, representing 13,000 student members and 165 schools in Washington State. DECA is a career and technical student organization, or CTSO, that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for future careers. CTSOs provide programs that improve student achievement, reduce dropout rates, and help students discover a wide range of career options. They are an important part of every school district. Every November, nearly 2,000 students and their advisors travel to Bellevue for the Washington DECA Fall Leadership Conference. Every March, 4,000 students and their advisors travel to Bellevue to participate in the State Career Development Conference. As a result of the massive influx of students, advisors, judges, and business partners, Visit Bellevue estimates that there's a combined economic impact of $3.2 million. Better yet, this $3.2 million is expected to continue to grow as Washington DECA continues increasing their membership and providing high-quality, hands-on learning opportunities to their members through these annual conferences. The impact will continue benefiting the great city of Bellevue. Today, there are two points under the Bellevue City Council three-year priority vision that I would like to talk about. First, the city's economic development goals include empowering small businesses and entrepreneurship and improving retail and tourism. Washington DECA conferences allow hundreds of small businesses and organizations an opportunity to advertise themselves to new demographics and markets. Each conference lasts three days, allowing attendees ample leisure time to shop, dine, and lodge around Bellevue, contributing to our local economy. For thousands of Washington residents who reside outside of King County, Washington DECA brings their business to Bellevue. Secondly, the city emphasizes being an active regional partner and strategically pursuing public and our private funding partnerships who are beneficial to Bellevue and the region. Washington DECA conferences are the event that further the city's priority to benefit Bellevue. My term as state president began in April and will conclude in nine months. My hope is that by the end of the time that I'm passing my position to the next emerging leader within our state and hanging out my DECA blazer, that the city of Bellevue and Washington DECA will have begun a unique partnership. A mutually beneficial partnership with Washington DECA has the potential to align with the city of Bellevue's strategic goals, empower tens of thousands of students, including those within Bellevue School District, and designate Bellevue as a city of the future. Washington DECA invites you to give a greeting on behalf of the city of Bellevue at one of our conferences as one way to collaborate among many other ways. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Hope Cullen. Join us in person. So I'll go to the final in-person speaker is Greg Johnson.
Good evening. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and council members, it's good to be back here to see you. It's been a little while. My name is Greg Johnson. I'm the CEO of Wright-Rundstedt &amp; Company. And I'm joined here tonight with Andy Bench, who's our newest partner at Wright-Rundstedt &amp; Company. And together, we represent the collective Spring District Ownership Group, and we thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed Development Agreement Amendment that's on your agenda later tonight. We first started envisioning the Spring, what the Spring District would become in the early 2000s. At that time, the extension of Sound Transit's rail line was uncertain. Bell Red zoning was still focused on industrial uses, and we were unsure whether our vision had any hope of becoming a reality. We are incredibly proud of what the district is today, and it's through the partnership with the city in the form of our development agreement. And in spite of the prolonged financial crisis, a global pandemic, and other market disruptions, we've developed 19 of the 27 blocks, and the district is now home to more than 1,000 residents, one of the world's largest companies, an innovation hub powered by the University of Washington, and active restaurant and retail spaces. And as we look to the future, we're excited about developing the final blocks. But we now face new economic and market headwinds that will extend their completion. The impetus for the amendment before you tonight is just that. We are asking for 10 more years of vesting under our current entitlements so that we can continue the framework set out in 2009 and complete the district's catalyst vision. In terms of our investment in public infrastructure, the catalyst project criteria contained in the development agreement requires investment of, on our part, of $300,000 per acre of public infrastructure. And to date, we have invested more than $1.3 million per acre in roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, utilities, parks, and open space for the public. Completion of the district that will be facilitated by the amendment is anticipated to double that infrastructure investment again, resulting in a total public infrastructure investment of nearly $100 million, which is nine times the catalyst requirement. And even though our public investment has far exceeded expectations, we are not just asking to maintain the status quo. As noted in the staff memo, we've agreed to more than double the commitment our projects provide through Tier One fee and loop payments and to direct those payments to support affordable housing because we recognize housing affordability is one of the biggest issues facing the city, and we must all do our part. We hope that you'll agree that our increased investment in housing, in addition to our significant past and future infrastructure investments, are public benefits that warrant the amendment. Lastly, I want to thank the city manager Miyaki and his team, including Director Stead and Matt McFarlane, who have worked closely with us to bring the amendment forward. But in particular, I want to thank everyone else for our partnership. Thank you.
Yep.
Does bring us to the end of our preregistered list. Because we were unable to hear from a couple of our virtual participants, we do still have time for two additional speakers. So I'd ask at this point, if there's anyone joining us who would like to make comment to the council, please raise your hand. We have had three speakers already in support of Save Coal Creek. So we cannot take any additional speakers there. Okay, and with that, I'll turn it back to you and let you know that I have communicated to all of the virtual participants. They are now on YouTube.
Great. Thank you so much for that follow-up. So with that, we'll move on to reports of community council boards and commission. There's not a presentation here, but there is, for my colleagues, written information only in our packet. So please do take a look at the Parks and Community Services Board Second Quarter 2023 Report. With that, we'll move along to a report of the city manager, and I believe he has two items this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members. The first item is an update on the city's Procurement Diversity Inclusion Plan, which focuses on our outreach plans as well as next steps. And joining us this evening is Ira McDaniel, Assistant Director in our Finance and Asset Management Department. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Andrew, for the update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Council's vision for Bellevue is rooted in the idea that our diversity is our strength. That applies to us as a municipal organization, as well as to our community, and the same applies to our economy. Bellevue's Procurement Diversity Inclusion Plan is one way in which we can influence the makeup of our economy by ensuring that we choose to spend our money on city projects and operations in ways that help to grow and support a diverse mix of businesses. Our existing plan was formed under the broader umbrella of the city's Diversity Advantage Plan, and it focuses on increasing access to small and diverse vendors through three primary strategies: outreach and networking, inclusive policies and practices, and tracking and monitoring. We've been working under this existing plan for several years, and we've implemented a lot of new tactics. For example, this year, we've been working on providing faster payment to small businesses. And we're also in the middle of hiring for some new positions that were allocated in the budget process. And I can't say enough, thank you. And those positions will make a huge difference. Having dedicated staff time for this is truly important, and it will make a big, big difference for us. We're also planning on more improvements in the near term, such as improved data collection and reporting part of those new positions. We're also looking at our roster system and considering migrating to a new system that is a little bit easier to navigate. And we're also tracking some changes in state law that will provide a new direct contracting pathway for small public works next year. We're excited about that one. So we've had a lot of great outcomes under the existing plan, but there is more that we can be doing and more that we should be doing. It's time to look at the foundations of our plan and ensure that it's structured to more fully address the needs of our vendor community. To help inform this update of our plan, we'll be seeking input from our vendor and stakeholder community over the next two months to get feedback on how we should reshape the plan going forward. We'll be getting feedback through an outreach website and a written survey, as well as hosting meetings so that we can hear directly from the community. We're looking at recommendations and actions that other agencies have taken with their programs. And we also want to remain open to hearing what the specific needs of our community is so that we can be responsive and tailor our program to Bellevue. After we complete the outreach, we'll compile the information and come back to council in the fall with a set of recommendations and prioritized actions. And I'm really excited for this outreach and to bring that back and share that with council. So with that, thank you for your support and your leadership, and I look forward to speaking again with you soon.
Next item, Deputy Mayor, are you ready? So. Maybe we could take a look into that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and Council members, this is an update on the city's Neighborhood Walks program. By way of background, the city has hosted these Neighborhood Walks since 2016. And these walks are intended to bring City Hall to our neighborhoods for the city leadership to listen to some of the great things that neighbors want to say about the city, but also firsthand hear some of the concerns and issues they may have and see it through their eyes. We held three this summer, one in Newport Hills, one in Crossroads, and one in Northwest Bellevue. Many, and many of the council members attended each one of these. Joining us tonight with the update is Mike McCormick-Huntelman, Assistant Director in the Community Development Department. Mike?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members. It's good to see you tonight. I'm going to share with you briefly about Neighborhood Walks. And as the city manager mentioned, we were up at Newport Hills in Crossroads in Northwest Bellevue this year. Tonight, we're not going to seek any council direction. This really is for information only. And as you recall, the idea behind Neighborhood Walks began in 2016. This is when the city manager said, "Hey, I want to find out a way to get city leadership connected with our residents more. Change the conversation that we have so we can walk together and listen to one another." Well, one of our residents affirmed that, that year, and said, "Hey, go out and buy a pair of tennis shoes, get out in the neighborhoods, and learn about what's going on through the city through our eyes." And so that's how it all began. We're now in our seventh year of Neighborhood Walks, and we create little mini parades around the neighborhoods as we walk around them. And one of the things that I'm especially proud of is the way that not only do our department directors participate, but that you also, as council, come out and participate as well and be able to show that, hey, we're accessible, we're listening, and we care about the city as much as you do. And that really changes the conversation that happens. So this year, we began up in Newport Hills. And Deborah Deutsch, she's the Vice President of the Newport Community Association, welcomed us and really shared a few things about what they love about Newport Hills, but also what they love about what makes Newport distinct. It's their small-town sense of community up there, their neighborhood character, the things that their neighborhood association does to not only advocate for their community, but also to build community locally up in Newport Hills. One of the things that struck me was not only how much they love what's going on on Woodlawn Park, but also the new park acquisition and the trail connections they're going to have to the park and ride. When we left there, new conversations happened that were unstructured, that connected residents with city leadership. And they started to unpack what's going on in terms of their neighborhood, the local concerns they have about public safety concerns, and their different hopes that they have about the shopping center and the mall and what's going on up there locally. One of the things that I love about Neighborhood Walks is it helps neighbors connect to neighbors. So one of the things that, again, happen is you have new residents showing up, and all of a sudden, they're connected to, to a neighbor that they hadn't known before. And they're meeting each other and building community at the same time. When we went out to Crossroads and welcomed new folks, we had a couple of unexpected things happen out there that were kind of fun. First off is we had a welcome dance. That, we were met by Ruben and his team, and they, every week, put on a dance where the community comes together. And their vision is to create a welcoming and inclusive community in Crossroads from people from all over the world. And they do that through dance. And Ruben said, "Let me do this dance to bless you and your beginning of your new Neighborhood Walk." We then heard from Tina and Youth Eastside Services. And as she shared about the programming that they're doing with youth out there, she also really highlighted a reminder to think about the people who we don't hear from and those on the margins, and don't lose sight of their voice as well, even as we began that walk. One of the fun things about Crossroads Walk this year is we got to get into a little cricket and a local cricket match and participate in that on the walk. And then we also got to check out what was going on in Inglebrook and the duplex neighborhood of Inglebrook, and how that made that neighborhood so special. As Michael Shiasaki was talking to a resident, one of the things I heard on this walk was how much people love the pop-up dog parks and how those are an added asset in our communities and neighborhoods. So that was really special. When we went to Northwest Bellevue, we started at Bellevue's Farmer's Market. And Neha is a Bellevue High School student who is very active with the Farmer's Market, and she's also very active with our youth link board. And so she shared about how passionate she is about the ways the city invests in our youth and the partnerships that exist, and just her love of the market and that space and what it provides as a gathering space in Northwest Bellevue. We had a chance to walk through Northwest Bellevue, and we saw some of those hidden treasures that exist in every neighborhood. This is Zumdike Park as we were walking through there. But as we're talking to neighbors, one of the things that came up for me was just somebody saying, "Hey, we had a recent residential burglary. What can we do to help us better prepare our neighborhood and our dwelling to prevent that from happening again?" And I remember hooking that couple up with our crime prevention detective. So right on the spot, they can have a conversation about how to be responsive to that need. One of the things that was part of the Neighborhood Walk is we had Chief Hagan explain a little bit about Fire Station 10 and what was going on at Fire Station 10 and the build and the thoughtfulness of the planning that has gone on. So the residents came away from that thinking, wow, there's a lot that happens to plan and to really get behind a new public facility. And they're very impressed with the city's responsiveness to setting that up. So as always in Neighborhood Walks, every Neighborhood Walks, we end with giving the residents the last word. We say, "What, what do you want us to take away from this?" And again and again, we hear local concerns that pop up in each neighborhood. In Northwest Bellevue, it was around speeding around Bellevue Way and the, the traffic volumes that are there, and just wanting to slow that down a little bit. But one of the things that's also special about Neighborhood Walks is we hear the acknowledgement and the gratitude of residents that city leadership spends the time to get out in the neighborhoods and to listen and engage. And it really is a hallmark of what sets Bellevue apart and something that I deeply wanted to express the gratitude of our residents, both to this council and to our city leadership for making that a priority and being out and doing it. So with that, I'm going to conclude this report. I'm also going to extend another invitation to help keep Bellevue beautiful on Saturday, which is going to be a great event here Saturday morning at City Hall. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And it is a special program. Having been on almost every one since it's launched. It is a fantastic program. You do, you and your team might do an incredible job putting these on every, every year. And I really appreciate, and what I hear from the other residents about how much of the city staff, senior leadership from city manager Brad Miyaki's team is all there, willing to have conversations about what's going on in the city. I really, really think it's a special thing, and the residents really appreciate it. So keep up the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, with that, Mr. City Manager, I think we're ready to move on to our one study session item tonight.
You have the consent calendar?
Oh, sorry.
Mayor?
Yep.
Apologize. Can I interrupt for one second?
You certainly may.
We do have the consent calendar for the council to consider. I do need to let you know that one of the comments... know that one of the commenters this evening that was signed up, Mr. Joe Kunsler, was going to speak specifically on a consent item, item I, which is Resolution 10291. And his specific comment as it relates to that is that he would like the council to consider a one-year or 365-day removal for repeat offenders from council meetings. Given the nature that the council will be taking final action on that this evening, I needed to let you know that that comment is in your email currently.
Great. Thank you so much.
I approve of the consent calendar.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. So with that, now, we will go to our only one study session item this evening.
Members, tonight is, one study session item is the proposed amendment to the 2009 Development Agreement between the city and Wright Runstead, which is within the Spring District. This is the first time, this is before the council, although there's, as was mentioned in oral communication, there has been discussions going on with, between the staff and Wright Runstead for an extended development agreement. After the presentation this evening, staff will be seeking council direction on how to best proceed with the potential terms for an extended development agreement, which will help inform the next steps with the council. And with that, joining us this evening is Mac McFarlane, Assistant City Attorney, as well as Liz Sted, Assistant Director and our Land Use Director, I'm sorry, in our Development Services Department. With that, I'll go ahead and over to you, Mac.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for having Ms. Sted and myself here for your last agenda item before your recess as well. So as the city manager mentioned, this is a proposed amendment to a 2009 Development Agreement that the city entered into with Wright Runstead for development of the Spring District, which is the city's only catalyst project located in the Spring District and/or anywhere in the city for that matter. And it also contains a conformance Luca, which, one way that Liz and I have thought about this is the purpose of the Luca is simply to conform the code to the terms of the Development Agreement, wherever council may land with that. Oops, I'm sorry. So as City Manager Miyake mentioned, we are looking for direction from council. The Development Agreement is, in fact, a contract between the city and Wright Runstead. And so the final decision on the terms of those contracts that the city would negotiate is a council decision. And the presentation that we're going to give today will ground council in the Development Agreement terms, and we're asking our council to direct staff to prepare the Development Agreement for the public hearing, initiate the corresponding Luca, and enter a finding of necessity for council to process the Luca. But that being said, we're also here to get council feedback with respect to terms of the Development Agreement that are in your packet and that we'll go through tonight. And I'm going to turn the next few slides over to Ms. Sted.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Newland House, council members. Thank you again for having us, and we'll try and make this brief, as I know it's your last meeting before our break. So tonight, on our agenda, we will talk a little bit more about the background of this project, the DA Amendment negotiations that the city attorney's office and Development Services Department participated in with Wright Runstead. We'll talk about the proposed amendments, the process and next steps, and then direction forward. When the city council first initiated the Bell Red Land Use Code, the council added a new provision in the code at 2025D035 authorizing a new potential class of projects, and those were called catalyst projects. These projects were meant to jumpstart development in Bell Red and were required to be located within close proximity to future light rail stations. Wright Runstead came to the table with property that was adjacent to planned stations but was at the time filled with warehouses and other non-residential uses. This code allowed for development agreements for these catalyst projects that could reduce fee and lieu rates and extend vesting for these special projects. Wright Runstead was an early pioneer in development of the Bell Red subarea through their Spring District project and were the first and only development to enter into a DA with the city using this code provision. The Development Agreement allowed Wright Runstead to have a reduced fee and lieu rate for Tier 1 amenities, including affordable housing for residential projects or Parks and Streams funding and regional transfer of development rights for commercial projects, and it also extended their vesting for 15 years, which is five years beyond what would be allowed normally through the Land Use Code. The Development Agreement between Wright Runstead and the city required that the developer provide a minimum of $300,000 per acre of infrastructure development. As you heard earlier from Mr. Johnson, there was actually a larger investment than that through the construction of the project. It also allowed for a reduced fee and lieu rate of $4 per square foot and an extended vesting of 15 years. The Spring District was a catalyst project and included 19 parcels, 11 of which have been developed today. The project has generated over $10.7 million in fee and lieu dollars, which have gone to a variety of different buckets in the city. Approximately $1.25 million has been generated for affordable housing and $4.1 million for Parks and Streams through the Tier 1 amenity system. Another $6.2 million has been generated for Tier 2 categories that has been spread throughout affordable housing, parks, art, and some other amenities. The terms of the DA have been satisfied. Some of those terms were requiring that the project meet minimum open space requirements and a minimum amount of housing to be provided on the site. The development was required to provide a minimum of 748,000 square feet of housing, and that has been satisfied. Wright Runstead has, through the build-out of the master development plan, also much exceeded those original estimates for infrastructure and have actually gone beyond the $300,000, which was the minimum required, to approximately $1.3 million per acre in infrastructure improvements to benefit the city. Infrastructure improvements include public and private roads, coordinated landscape improvements across the site, coordination of required utilities, including sewer improvements and electrical upgrades. All of this was done to support the new development and was done in a coordinated way across the site to take advantage of efficiencies in construction and to create a seamless development from the end user's perspective. There are eight parcels left to be developed, primarily north of the existing Spring District Light Rail Station. Some of those have been impacted by the current development slowdown, which had prompted Wright Runstead to approach the city about a potential extension to the Development Agreement. Matt is going to go ahead and discuss further the negotiations that we've had so far with Wright Runstead.
Thank you, Liz. And as Liz mentioned during that background presentation, Wright Runstead approached the city, and the term that they were looking for, as Mr. Johnson also mentioned, was a 10-year extension for their catalyst project. If council will recall, we already have the contract, the Development Agreement, in place. And so when they originally approached the city, all that they were looking for was 10 more years under the same terms of the original Development Agreement. So as we started negotiating, Liz and I, along with input from the city manager's office, went back to Wright Runstead and requested an increase to the fee and lieu amount, which, as you may have heard, was $4 per square foot currently, in exchange for the 10-year extension. So in contract parlance, that was one of the terms of consideration or one of the city's benefits in exchange for the 10-year extension, which is the benefit to Wright Runstead. We also negotiated a fee and lieu increase that would be tiered. It would start with $4 per square foot, and then in January, March, May 3, 2027, when the original agreement would expire, it would go up to 45% of the published rate for the fee and lieu. The parties also agreed through these negotiations that the city could apply the Tier 1 fee and lieu to the development of affordable housing. That would not be available for the city to have that option under the current DA and also the current Land Use Code. And another benefit for the city is that the DA would ensure the continued private investment in public infrastructure. This is one of the benefits that the city received from just the catalyst project as a whole, is that, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, the code would have required $300,000 per square foot in infrastructure investment, and to date, the average has been $1.3 million per square foot for the Spring District. So with the original DA, then, once again, the consideration or the exchange was the benefits that Wright Runstead received with the catalyst project criteria, and then also the reduced fee and lieu, of course. And the city received the benefit of that private investment in public infrastructure, which would go above and beyond what a non-catalyst project, just a regular master development project in the city, would provide. This slide, I think that it's beneficial for council to read this as rows. I apologize if the agenda memo wasn't entirely clear on some of these terms, but I hope this slide will be very easy to follow. That's what happens when the attorney drafts the agenda memo, I'm afraid. But with the proposed DA amendments, as we mentioned, the current fee and lieu is $4 per square foot until the expiration of the DA, which would be May 3, 2027. That's locked in under the current contract, and we are carrying that over with the proposal to track the same expiration date under the amendment, which would be $4 per square foot until that May 3, 2027 date. After that, the fee and lieu rate would go up to 45% of the published rate. And for reference, we've included the current published rate, which is $22.38 per square foot. So if you take 45% of that, then it's currently right around $10, a little bit over $10 per square foot. Also, under the current DA and the current Land Use Code, as I mentioned, the Tier 1 amenities, the application of that fee and lieu based on Tier 1 amenities cannot be applied to the development of affordable housing, but the DA amendment would allow the city at its option to apply that fee and lieu payment to the development of affordable housing. And then the vesting term is exactly what Ms. Sted mentioned. Our standard MDP provisions allow for 10 years of vesting for a master development plan, so the current DA allows five extra years of vesting. The proposal requested by Wright Runstead would add an additional 10 years based on market conditions and would result in a total of 25 years vesting for the Spring District Catalyst Project. The corresponding Luca is very straightforward. Under the Local Project Review Act, the Development Agreements, and this is not unique to this Development Agreement, this is any Development Agreement that the city may enter into, needs to be consistent with the development regulations that the city has in the Land Use Code. So the way that we have set this up is the Luca would essentially be a conformance amendment to track the terms of the DA that the city would negotiate with Wright Runstead. The amendments are focused on, very narrowly focused, on that catalyst project subsection or section in the Bell Red Code. So we aren't cracking up any, or cracking open any other portion of the Bell Red Code. We're just focused on the catalyst project section. As I mentioned at the outset, this is the one catalyst project in Bell Red and in the city. So it's a unique DA, and it's also a unique section in our code. Given the structure of that code and the deadlines for a master development plan application, the city could not have another catalyst project in Bell Red without further amendments to the code. This would be the only one. And the bullet points at the bottom cover those primary terms, the new fee and lieu rates, which would go up from the current fee and lieu rates after May 3, 2027, the ability of the city to apply those fee and lieu payments to affordable housing, and then the extended vesting period that Wright Runstead has requested from the city. And I'm going to turn over the next two slides to go through the upcoming process to Liz.
Okay, last transition point. So wanted to talk through just our process and where we're at. So today, we are at the first study session for this. We recognize that while we have had a lot of communication with Wright Runstead, the council as a body has not had that opportunity. And so we wanted to bring this to you early and let you know, you know, we brought, we came here with some negotiations that have taken place where we were able to find some common ground with Wright Runstead, but wanted to bring it to you for your input, of course. To that end, we have added a study session in that we proposed would happen sometime, depending on how much input and information council needs coming back. We would kind of determine the timing, best timing for that study session, and we would then think about going to the public hearing for the Development Agreement Luca. So built in some extra time so that we would have an ability to answer any questions that you have and bring everyone up to speed. We are looking at some of the next steps that we have to do. We do need to notice the application for the Land Use Code Amendment, so that is one of our next steps. We will also be drafting ordinances, well, Matt will be drafting ordinances, thankfully I will not. But we'll be working on staff report and also linking the environmental review for the Development Agreement and Luca. Then we will have council review any potential ordinances, then have our public hearings, and then look for possible action. So early in the process right now, hoping to get some direction this evening, which takes me to our last slide, direction for council consideration. We are asking the staff provide us direction on how you would like us to proceed and any questions or any other areas that you would like us to explore to move this forward. We would also like to ask that council enter a finding of necessity to process the Luca so that it is not sent over to the Planning Commission, but in fact, the city council remains with this Luca. I think that's probably the most expeditious way, since it's so closely tied to the DA and really is just a conformance amendment. But we did want to ask for that direction as well. So with that, I will pass that back to you, Deputy Mayor, and if we're available for any questions, concerns, thoughts.
Great, thank you. And thank you for bringing this to us so early to give us enough time, just in case we need it. So I really appreciate that. And so before us then is to give some direction, some feedback on the amendments to this Development Agreement in terms of processing the DA or not, as well as directing staff regarding this DA and some of the negotiations that have gone on already. I might just ask that my colleagues try not to get too much into the weeds and keep it somewhat high level, if possible, in terms of what you'd like to see or not see within the negotiations. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to begin the process of giving some feedback on this. I'm going to start with our resident expert on land use with Councilmember Robertson, and then I'll go to Councilmember Stokes, and then we'll make our way down. So please, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will try to stay out of the weeds. So first, I wanted to thank staff for coming before us earlier in the process with this and giving us a chance to weigh in. And I wanted to thank Wright Runstead. We've had a very beneficial partnership over the years, and I remember when we did the Bell Red Plan, I was Chair of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, with Wright Runstead's encouragement, came up with Catalyst Developer, and I think it was a really good thing at the time, and we've seen a lot of investment in that area, both from the developer and from the city. I think the city put somewhere like $100 million into the public infrastructure in Bell Red area. So, and one of the things that we did at that time with the Catalyst Development, just to ground people in a little bit of the history, the Bell Red Plan required people who were building residential developments to have, if they wanted to access the incentive system, to build onsite units. But the Catalyst Developer, the developer, was excused from that and was allowed to do fee and lieu. I got that right, right? My memory's, that's for staff. I got that right, right?
The Development Agreement that was going into with Wright Runstead required a certain level of residential development be onsite.
But not affordable housing onsite?
No.
Right, that's what I was saying. That was the, they got excused from that and were able to do the fee and lieu instead. So, and then the council adopted the Land Use Code for Bell Red in 2009, right before I came onto the council. So I, well, I appreciate so much the partnership. I'm a little bit concerned about the DA as structured. Number one, I think 25 years is too long for a Development Agreement. I think it's overly long. 15 years seems long enough. I know there's economic headwinds. Everyone's facing that, not just people that have a Development Agreement in Bellevue. I'd like to also see more public benefit. 15 years, they had a, we, there was a very sweet deal for the public and for Wright Runstead, which I said was very appropriate at the time. which I said was very appropriate at the time. It's been a long time, and this is still good for four more years. So I'd like to see more public benefit. 45% fee-in-lie with no housing onsite, which everyone else has to do if they're building residential, seems a little generous. So whether we have, if the council desires staff to go back to the table, which I do, whether it's to increase the fee-in-lie, to have some parks and streams, to have onsite affordable housing, whatever the public benefit is, I think that we need more of it. This is a really long extension, so I'd like to see more public benefit. Bell Red was supposed to have a lot of public benefit built in, which the Catalyst Developers got to have a little less, less give there. The other thing is, my understanding is that under the DA as proposed, if we update the Bell Red land use code, either under the current comp plan process that we're in right now or under the future Bell Red look forward, they would be able to take advantage of the higher heights and density while still clinging to the DA, 45% fee-in-lie or whatever it is, 20% right now, fee-in-lie until 2027. Am I right about that?
That's correct. And that was actually a structure that was in the original 2009 DA. The, it's actually Section C of the original DA that breaks up the governing regulations into two different categories, both the current code regulations and then future regulations as well. And we've maintained that structure with the DA amendment and with just kind of general vesting, we have agreed in the amendment as proposed that it would be the developer's option if they did not want to be bound by the current code. And Councilmember Robertson is correct, that's something where we do not have a provision in the DA where the city would force them to update to the current code, except what's already in the 2009 DA.
Okay. So we're about to update the code pretty substantially in a way that will create additional public benefit as well in exchange for the significant density lift. And so it seems to me that allowing someone to get all the benefit of the density and height lift without the commensurate public benefit isn't really fair. If we're going to do that, and I know this council will be grappling with mandatory inclusionary next year, we shouldn't have something where someone gets to have all the benefit of the new code without doing their share of the burden that is created as an exchange for that lift. So my recommendation would be that if the council decides to extend this DA, that the developer can either proceed under the DA, under the 2009 land use code with all the benefits and burdens, or they can have an out and develop under whatever the new code will be at that time, which would have an incentive system and requirements to develop. I think that that's fair, and we're going to structure, the plan is to structure the code so that people can still pencil, and I know I'm going overly long, I apologize, that their projects will still pencil when they do the incentives. It should pencil for everybody, and if we have it right, that should be an offer that they should be able to take, but they shouldn't be able to get all the benefits of that while still clinging to the benefits of a development agreement. I just don't think that that's a very fair system. So my recommendation would be that we encourage staff to go back to the table, to seek, to renegotiate with the developer based on whatever the council input has in addition to mine, and see if we can come up with something that is more fair to the public. The public has also put a lot of money into Bell Red, and we are going to put a lot of thought into an updated land use code that will hopefully work for everybody, so would like to see that happen. And then, of course, the land use code update should be consistent with whatever the council decides to do with the DA at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Stokes?
Well, that's a lot to consider when it hasn't been before us, and I, actually, I think the proposal as presented is a rational, beneficial proposal, and it's an extension. And there's, the amazing thing is happening in the Spring District that people thought would never happen in that way, and the other factor, though, is that, and I think the time extension is reasonable. Doing five years doesn't make a whole lot of sense. 10 years is good, and they can always complete it quicker than that. And there has been a disruption that we can't just toss out, and something kind of has been burdensome to us, but it's a, it's something particularly with putting in the economy and whatever's happened, or things that have happened, and the light rail piece, which has been an important part of the Spring District. And that has, that has hampered the going forward on it. That is on the way, and I think it will, and certainly at 10 years, it better be done. But I think that's another factor put into this. So I think the, and it's still, you know, the staff is working on it, but I think it's a very positive proposal put forward. I'm not averse to looking at things and things that have been raised, questions about it, but I think that the, to a certain extent, the spirit of what we had putting this together, what has it been, 12, 10 years ago or more, is been very good, very good for Bell Red, very good for that side of the, of the city. In fact, had we not had Bell, had a Spring District, I still think we'd be worrying about, when are we going to get to the east side? The Spring District has moved us to a larger Bellevue, and now we're working on the, you know, the east trail, which is going to connect into that. We're working on the, trying to think, the long-term public trips over there, and I think it's been a revolutionary piece over there, and to come along and then kind of put it to, maybe making it not viable as it has been, is a question. So I'd like to get staff to have a good review of this and look what the different impacts would be if the proposal that's been put forward to change what is being recommended. And it's difficult, of course, to take a look at that, and at this point, without any real data or real understanding how it fits together. But I think with the Grand Connection pieces, as I was trying to remember, I think this is just a big changer, and I think they've done a tremendous job, and their plans going forward are very positive. And you've had a good, I think, conversation with them and a good bargaining back and forth in terms of things, upping the, both the prospects for, you know, for the company as well as doing better things for Bellevue. So I think it's a positive growth forward. But I would, I would be comfortable in going with it at this point, but I think these are issues that we should look at and have some answers to. But just kind of throwing the old one out and coming in with a new piece is not, I think, very helpful in moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I'm going to really go from a very high perspective, so I heard Deputy Mayor say clearly before the meeting, we want to keep it very short. We actually wanted to get up before 7 o'clock, but maybe a little bit longer than that. So I want to say that Bellevue Corridor Development is amazing planning process because of the staff, because the city council, because the city has such a vision, and we had the opportunity to develop something together with land use, with transportation, with all the needs, all the amenities the city has considered, building all at once. So this is, I will call, a perfect planning model. And even more to it, it's a, we leave it for the market force to do it, not artificially pushing something, one way or the other. As a result, it's proven to be a wonderful project. But to do that, we need to have a great partnership between the private sector, between public sector, and also the timing's important, so that the, it needs a lot of perseverance working together and the relationship that we've built. So I want to compliment Wright-Runstedt also in this process. Going back a little bit further than that, I don't know if people know that or not, you know, we just, very sad that to see the passing of John Runstead, and obviously, we know, you know, Mr. John Norby as well. Wright-Runstead is the company that built the first skyscraper on the east side, the Bellevue Tower, it still sits there. So it's amazing what they have been, a good partner, being on the east side. But all that said, we have been, depending on the timing and the Bellevue Corridor, and they obviously take their risk and gamble, invested in Spring District, which is a very big deal for the Bell Red Corridor development, and now, actually, even more to the future, as we can see. We have 900 acres of land that has just barely been begun, and we are going to connect with Wilburton, ultimately connecting to downtown. So it's a major, major vision that we have there. So I can understand why, you know, we did all those things, catalyzed, you know, projects, and we want to be sure that we've got all the things in place, great partnership, and we've been able to do that. So I, you know, when I first heard about this project proposal just last week, first time, I was a little bit taken aback, say, wow, gee, there's a lot of things going on, you know, I need to know more. I heard Jennifer Robertson, Councilmember, the one thing to us as a public servant is to look at public benefit, you know, we, absolutely, I treasure, I listen, I value what takes to, you know, keep the private sector moving, because, you know, they are here to also for how to keep it going. So I'm very, very sympathetic, and, but the problem is that, just briefly listening to you negotiating, articulating, which we're not, you know, privy to, I don't know what else there may be, what is the real broad public benefit that we can be asking, we can be looking at, we can be doing for the benefit of the public, because I think all has to benefit, otherwise if one is to, the other isn't, you know, it's not going to work, right, because that's not happened, you know. So I appreciate what's being asked, and I, but listening to you, I think they make sense, but also listening to, you know, Councilmember Robertson, that's a very good point. So I would like to, I'm glad that you suggested in your process, you're adding one additional time, you know, opportunity for us to listen to all of the perspective, listening to all the negotiation, the points. I'd like to listen to the other council members, because we all have our perspective with the public, the community. I think that would give us a real grounded, rational process to see what is the benefit, what are the benefits to the city, what are the benefits to Wright-Runstead, and what the city ultimately for the public, and how we can work together to come up with agreement as we did, you know, when we first started the Spring District. So far, they've done well. So far, the city has been moving forward. They've invested a lot more in infrastructure and whatever, and we have done the same thing. And I think that we should continue to do so. I think that's my promise. It's important, we'll continue to maintain this partnership with good faith, looking at all the things that we need to do to make sure that we all succeed. But right now, I only have one piece, very, very limited bits of information. So I'd like to, in the next few weeks, whatever, how long it takes, to get more information, more opportunity to discuss what other things we can work together, work together. I think ultimately, it's going to benefit the developer, it's going to benefit the city, the public, we'll all come up with a better solution, you know, after all, so. And things are happening too, we know. Before, your housing is not such a big deal, but now, you know, it is, and we have ways doing it, and other partners are maybe coming in, so we need to consider all that stuff. But I want to, again, thank Wright-Runstead and compliment them for sticking around with us, and we, I definitely want to maintain this relationship. They are proven factored to being here a long time, and however, I want to be sure that we all have the opportunity to look at all picture.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Barxell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I support the proposal. I appreciate staff and Wright-Runstead working to come up with an agreement, and also I support entering a finding of necessity. And I support it because the track record of the work that Wright-Runstead has already done, they've shown that they're, they will invest beyond the minimum requirements and that they are, they care about the public benefit and the evolution of the Spring District and the value of it to our community. If, if it does go back to negotiation, I am curious, was there any discussion about having, applying the fee-in-lie payments for, to affordable commercial spaces, given the, it's part of the Bell Red area, which is going to be targeted as the arts district, there are going to be a lot of mom and pop shops there? Has that, was that part of the conversation at all?
That was not part of the conversation today, but we could certainly explore that if it's something that the council would like us to explore further.
Okay. So as I mentioned, I do support it as it is, but if we decide to have the continuing negotiation or conversations, I would like to explore that. So it wouldn't, I imagine that wouldn't add any requirements on the, on Wright-Runstead, but it'd just be another option for the application of funds to support affordable commercial space.
That's correct. It wouldn't change the substantive fee-in-lie amount, if I'm understanding you correctly, Councilmember Barxell.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Barxell, and Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I'm going to start by saying I agree that this should stay with the city council instead of going to the Planning Commission. I think that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and early enough to get some feedback and understanding, because as you said, we don't have a lot of development agreements, and certainly, this is the only Catalyst Project that we have. And, you know, I agree with my colleagues that this was crafted at a time where we were moving in a recession, and the fact that this project was able to move ahead and create that space for us at a time where lots of other developments weren't happening gave us that opportunity that doesn't come along very often, to be able to have a partner like Wright-Runstead to activate the space is tremendous, and so I'm glad that we were able to do that. You know, being able to have a TFI loan that's less than 2% interest, to have infrastructure in partnership with Wright-Runstead, I think is also huge. You know, I was thinking, as my colleagues were talking, that certainly in 2009, we were not seeing the affordable housing crisis that we are today. So I really appreciate that as our goals in the city have changed, that what you're bringing before us with the amendment includes that fee-in-lie being able to be used for affordable housing. I agree with Councilmember Barxell, if we do decide as a body that we want to have you go back and do some further negotiation. I think that we have struggled with affordable commercial space, so if there is a way to include within the amendment that, I also think about an amendment like childcare, which is something that we've talked about a lot of, that would be an amendment or an amenity that we don't have nearly enough of in our city. I do have a couple of questions, and maybe that's what's prompting the questions about the public benefit, and that is, I'm so appreciative of the fact that the $300,000 per acre, that the actual was actually substantially more than that. What I didn't quite understand is, so how, what is the assurance from the city that we're going to continue to see the higher investment than the 300K per acre? Because I think what you're hearing is, maybe there isn't quite the understanding that we're getting this reduced fee-in-lie collection, but in exchange, we're getting something that a normal fee-in-lie wouldn't have, which is the development-funded infrastructure. So I'm wondering if that's something you can give us a little bit more insight in, because maybe the holistic view of the whole package is not as well-understood right now based on the information that's in here. So if that is helpful for my fellow council members, my sense is maybe that's the piece that we're missing, is while you've shown pieces of the math, we're struggling a little bit with the aggregate total of the kind of public benefit we're getting so that we feel assurance that we're right sizing the dial for the development agreement terms. I think- I think that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues. And then the other one is, I think that you'd also talked about the fee and lieu, and I'm wondering if there's a way to better understand what kind of estimated funding we could receive for affordable housing, because, again, the math is kind of there, but we haven't actually done the math ourselves to understand. And my sense is that that may be what's prompting some of these questions. I'm not concerned about the time extension, because when I think about the fact that we're two-thirds done, we have a third to go, and the market is softening right now, and we've talked about in other development areas, actually giving developers a little bit more time recognizing that, so we should be willing to afford the same to Wright Runstead, who's been a good partner in this catalyst project. So those were, I think, I had a couple of questions embedded in here that if you want to respond. Thank you.
I can take a stab at some of these, and some will probably want to give you back, bring you back more information. So from kind of a global perspective, when we think about your first question, actually, I had one prior to that. You had mentioned childcare. There actually is the ability in the land use code right now for childcare to be an option in Tier Two, which is if the development has reached a certain density, they get pushed into Tier Two. And we have seen that, that was, they did get credit for some childcare in the Spring District already, which is really great. But potentially, you could also add that to this Tier One, if that was council direction. In terms of what is the assurance that there would be a continued high level of investment? The assurance, and we can do more research and bring back, you know, diagrams and maps, but those lots that still need to be developed still require a lot of roadway improvements, a lot of sidewalk improvements, a lot of landscaping, all of those things that are coming on. And because this area was never developed in this manner previously, really, it was warehouses, they just don't have any of that infrastructure. Wright Runstead has had to do all of it on their own. So in many circumstances, you could imagine, in Bell Red, we have locations where a property will come up for development, and they will say, we're going to build this building, and we're like, well, that's great, but there's a planned road adjacent to you. That developer generally only has to build half of the road. In this circumstance, because they're the sole developer, they have had to build the whole road. So that's one example of where those investments would continue to be, and why they may appear to be higher than some of the other investments. And we can provide you more information and detail around what those areas are that still need to be redeveloped. So be happy to bring back more information on that. Your second question...
I think that would be very helpful, because my sense is maybe it's not well-understood that usually in a land lease, right, the government is responsible for bringing infrastructure up to a certain point, so if the developer's doing that instead, that is a public benefit that maybe isn't clearly articulated in the documents.
Yeah, we can certainly bring back some more information about what is left, you know, kind of what are those areas that are still left. And then in addition to that, you had asked kind of, what is the estimate? What's the money? So we can do some research and bring you back, but it's going to be a real range, just because the way the current development agreement proposal, extension proposal, is actually a percentage of whatever is the current rate. That rate fluctuates and changes according to CPI. So we change that every January, we publish a new rate. So we can get you, you know, in the ballpark, given what is in their current master development plan, and what is the potential for these sites. Again, it's going to be a guesstimate of some sort, but we can certainly look at that more fully. Matt, did you have any outs?
No, I think with respect to the fee and lieu rate, one of the reasons that we included that row with the $22.38 current fee and lieu, is that's our published rate, which is publicly available, and that's due on a building permit issuance, under our standard practice. I did go back and look at the fluctuation over the last decade or so, and it's all over the map, because the CPI has fluctuated so much. I mean, for example, with inflation, it was, it went from $20 to $22 over the last year. That's a pretty extreme increase in the amount, because the inflation rate was 9%. We can't predict with certainty what will happen to the CPI. If we did, we would weaponize that ability, but the reality is that it's going to go up. We're talking about the amendment would kick in in 2027, so we have, you know, roughly three and a half years before that 45% kicks in, and it's probably going to fluctuate like it has over the last decade. Some years, it'll go up more than others, some years, it may not go up at all, or if we're in a, you know, there's the potential that it could go down a bit too. But in all likelihood, it's going to incrementally increase, but we can't know with certainty what that published rate will be a decade from now.
Yeah, well, I think you've been really thoughtful. It's just more maybe having a little bit more of that visibility that we didn't understand. Thank you.
All right. My turn. First of all, great presentation, really appreciate the time and effort that you've put into the negotiations prior to this, and again, the fact that you're bringing this to us so early. I want to thank Wright Runstead as well. Amazing project, and I agree with all my colleagues, you've been such a great partner developing the Spring District, and it's become such an incredible destination for residents and businesses, and, you know, for those that want to dine, or drink, or play, or work, or what have you, it's becoming the place in Bellevue. So it's been a great partnership. Having said that, I also think there's a lot of other great projects around Bellevue too. I mean, I think, you know, it might not be a catalyst project, but, you know, I think it's been great to see what, like KG Investments was able to do in Wilburton Retail Complex there, and I think that East Main is going to be incredible project as well. So, and I hope that we show that deference to all developers, and being willing to sit down at the table with them and negotiate like this. So I really appreciate staff being so open to hearing the concerns, looking at extending a DA, understanding what their pain points are, their priorities, and how they're going to develop the remaining eight parcels, I believe. So just have a lot of kudos for staff to get it to this point. What I think I'm hearing so far is, I think we're all in agreement that we want to keep this with the council, so we'll enter a finding of necessity for the council processes, Luca. I'm also hearing, as I agree, that we keep moving forward with the amendment to extend this development agreement. I am not concerned about the length either. I'm not as concerned about that as I am about the public benefit. I would like to see a little bit more. Councilmember Barxell maybe was looking at my notes, but I agree with him that, I'm just kidding, about the, and Councilmember Zahn mentioned this as well, in terms of the affordable commercial space. There's a real need for that, as there, obviously, as we all know, the affordable housing is a huge need as well. Would like to see that increase in the fee and lieu. But that affordable commercial, there's so many small business owners, be it automotive, or, I don't know, auto detail, restaurants, you name it, all those are in that warehouse space right now, that there's a towing company in there too, et cetera. So are they going to be able to afford that space? Probably not. Are they going to be able to be in that Spring District? Something to look at, something to maybe look at if there's any ability to negotiate some affordable commercial space there, because I think it's really needed there more than almost maybe anywhere else in the city right now. So, and then the arts, as was mentioned as well, you know, that's where our arts district is going to be located near there. It'd be great to connect it to the Spring District and have some availability for discounted or affordable space for artists in the Spring District. So I would be in favor of taking a look at that as well. So with that, I think we've heard, again, keeping with the council, keep moving this forward. I think we do have some, potentially some negotiating consideration to have with Wright Runstead. And I have, I see Councilmember Robertson wants to make an additional point. So I won't go all the way around, but if anybody wants to make an additional comment after Councilmember Robertson's comment, I'll allow you to do that. So Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to build on something Councilmember Zahn said about the infrastructure. I think that having additional information on the investments that the developers are making, I would specifically like to know whether those investments are project-level investments, or whether they are system-level investments. Because if they're system-level, we already have incentives in our land use code where they can get transportation impact fee credits and such, so, or other credits if they're, you know, potentially utility investments or whatever. So project-level versus system-level, I'd like to have that information, come back with that. And that was all I was going to say.
Okay.
And I'm happy to make a motion to kind of, because I think I was listening to the council, if you would like me to, but if anyone else wants to speak, ask for that one little bit of nuance of information.
Sure, let's see if anybody else had any additional comments. Doesn't look like it, no? Then, oh, and then the other piece is, I think some council members wanted to have some additional information that you can follow up with them directly offline. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
Okay. I move to direct staff to return to the table to discuss the council's input tonight with the developer, and then to return to a future council meeting with additional information and potential revisions to a proposed development agreement, to maintain, to create a finding of necessity for the council to process the corresponding Luca, which will go with the development agreement and be consistent therewith.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. So that passes. I hope you have all the information that you need. Great. With that, we are adjourned, but I did want to mention that the council will be on recess for the rest of August and the beginning portion of September. Our first meeting back will be on Monday, September the 11th. Have a great rest of your summer, everybody. Thank you.